I'd like to call out Daniel A. Leta, the head of the county commissioners to order. For the hand, would you please offer a prayer?
Eternal God, our Father, we are so grateful and thankful for the dawning of a new year into our lives, the beginning of another possibility of getting to know each other better, to love each other. And as we share together, we thank you for the interest that is given tonight in our meeting that there's somebody who's concerned about where we live. But help us never be selfish, but sensitive to the needs of others. As we share together, may we do the things pleasing in your sight. Do what is right, and we can live together as brothers and sisters in Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, we always like to recognize the elected officials that might be with us. I see Al Kirk, Sheriff of the Act. I see, we know him as Reverend John, I see Councilmember John. And I see the newly resident spiritual guest, I'm gonna call him Leonard, we can teach him. Any other elected officials that might be here? Please, Councilmember Commissioner, Sheriff Sirock from President, what's his name?
Mario.
Mario. Jerome Mario, from President, excuse me for that.
He also has an intern town manager for the town.
As you have noted. Any others? Here and now, we move on this time. Minutes of our previous meetings presented for approval, you've gotten them in your packets? Any additions or corrections?
May for approval.
Thank you. All in favor, that is, nobody will sign a aye?
Aye.
All opposed, here and none, they are approved. At this time, we have a public hearing, which is a quasi judicial hearing. It's called to order to receive citizen comments or questions relative to a proposed special use permit request from Sun Energy LLC for the construction of a solar energy project. This meeting is now called to order. Mr. Peters, would you read, please read the public notice?
Yes, sir. Public notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held by the Board of Commissioners of Edgecombe County on Monday, January 7th, 2019, 7:00 p.m. In the County Commissioners' Room, 2nd floor, County Administrative Building, 201 St. Andrews Street, Tarboro, North Carolina, to approve a special use permit submitted by Sun Energy One LLC for the construction of a solar energy system. The site for the proposed project is located generally along Hartsmill Run Road between Nobles Mill Pond Road and Hart's Chapel Road. Copies of the proposed solar energy system are available for public inspection during business hours, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. in the County Planning Office, Room 205, County Administrative Building, 201 St. Andrews Street, Tarboro, North Carolina. All parties in interest and all interested residents are invited and urged to be present and make their views known. This is the 20th day of December, 2018, by order of the Board of Commissioners of Edgecombe County, Frangie Mungo, and Carton Board.
At this time, I'll be guided by, Mr. Peters, in terms of making sure that this is what you're up to this year, and make sure that we do this correct, I'll be guided by you in terms of swaying it procedurally?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, the applicant who submitted the application for the special use permit can present first, but...
We didn't swear as a witness.
You mean swearing anyone who's gonna offer testimony, sir?
Would the applicant, thought that, that apply for, please come forward, so that you can be sworn? If there are any other witnesses to be sworn, please come forward, we're just for all of you at this time.
But for any?
For, for and against, those that would be opposing, please, would you please come forward?
Yes, sir.
Everybody that would like to speak here, please come forward and be sworn.
So if you'll first step to the microphone, give us your name and address, and then step to the side and we'll swear everyone in at the same time.
Linda Wadike, 192 Raceway Drive, Moronsville, North Carolina, and 28, 11, 28 to 117.
Oh, oh, did you get it? Huh? Please, please, make sure, we need to make sure that Al Kirk gets it.
My name is Linda Wadike, and my business address is 192 Raceway Drive, Moronsville, North Carolina, 28117.
Spell it for us.
Your last name?
Spell it.
N as in Nancy, W as in water, A as in apple, D as in David.
Your last name?
My last name. D as in David, I as in egg, K as in kilo, E as in egg.
Avery Strickland, 1575 Hartsmill Run Road, Tarboro, 27886.
Alright.
Albert Clark, 2749 Hartsmill Run Road.
Randy Kilbride, 3810 Hartsmill Run Road, Tarboro.
John Kilbride, 3886 Hartsmill Run Road, Tarboro.
Bill Clark, 1007 St. Andrews Street, Tarboro.
Amanda Abrams Kill, 119 Venture Lane, Tarboro, North Carolina.
Isaac Panzarella, and that's spelled P-A-N-Z-A-R-E-L-L-A. I live at 232 Glasscock Street, Raleigh, North Carolina.
David B. Digges, 752 Eagles Terrace, Rockin Mall, North Carolina.
Yvonne Canzino, 3848 Dorchen Boulevard, Rockin Mall. C-A-N-C-I-N-O.
Georgia Strickland, 1575 Hartsmill Run Road, Tarboro.
Brian Kennedy, 192 Raceway Drive, Moronsville, North Carolina.
Good evening, Kenny Habul, H-E-B-U-L, 898 Lexington Drive, Greenville.
Hey, Hunter Quincy, 3160 Hartsmill Run Road, Tarboro.
Buddy Pittman, 414 Martin Lane, Tarboro.
Ashley Taylor, 1342 Raccoon Ranch Road, Tarboro.
Richard Kirkley, K-I-R-K, L-A-D, address is 9408 Northfield Court, Raleigh, North Carolina.
Is anybody?
Janice West, 1557 Hartsmill Run Road, Tarboro, North Carolina.
Roger Sourhorn, 6246 US 258 South Tarboro, Carolina.
Is there anybody else? We're hearing none. Now, when, when we call you forward, I'll ask each one of you, have you been sworn? Okay, just to make sure that...
So we're gonna be swearing now, so they will all remain standing?
Okay. Please go ahead, Madam Kirk.
If you'd like to put your hand on the Bible or just read your name?
Or is he, get as close to it as you can?
Okay, do you swear or affirm that the evidence we shall give to the board in this action shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? So help you God.
Sir?
Yes, sir, Mr. Jerry. Sun Energy Systems, as you've already mentioned, has a special use permit, or SUP, as we abbreviate it, submitted for a proposed solar energy project. It will be over 1,400 acres located along and in the vicinity of Hartsmill Run Road. The SUP has been reviewed by the planning board at their last meeting and forwarded with a favorable recommendation. You have called for, and proper notice has been given, for a public hearing to be held at your January meeting tonight. A summary of the related county ordinances is included in your packet. This describes the SUP application process, your authority in hearing an SUP request, and the standard by which you are to waive that request. The applicant for the SUP, along with those who wish to be heard during the public hearing, both in favor of and in opposition to the proposed action, must be first sworn in. Their comments will be recorded as testimony in this quasi judicial process. Then you may proceed with hearing from those sworn in, starting with the applicant. Once the public hearing is closed, the board will then consider taking two separate actions. First, to determine whether or not the application is complete and complies with all applicable requirements of the ordinance. Secondly, either a motion specifying what requirements it failed to meet or to approve the special use permit. I do want to direct your attention, if I could, inside your packet, that, that summary that you have there of the special use permit application process, I know you are now familiar with this, but I think it will be helpful, especially for those who are here, to speak before it exists. As you will note, under the section that talks about the public hearing requirements after notice, it talks about the standard. It says, "The Board of Commissioners shall approve the requested permit unless it concludes, based upon the information submitted at the hearing, that, one, the requested permit is not within its jurisdiction according to the Table of Permitted Uses, or the application is incomplete, or, if completed as proposed in the application, the development will not comply with one or more of the requirements of this Edgecombe County ordinances." And based on review and recommendation of the staff, none of that applies here. So it does, it does comply. Then it goes on to say, "However, even if the board finds the application complies with all of the provisions of the Edgecombe County ordinances, it may still deny the permit if it concludes that, based upon the information submitted at a, at the hearing, that it, if completed as proposed, the develop, the development more probably than not would, one, materially endanger the public health or safety, or will substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting property, or will not be in harmony with the area in which it is to be located, or will not be in general conformity with the land development plan or other plans officially adopted by the board." And I want to note, you'll see there further in the reading, it talks about the burden of proof at this hearing tonight. The burden of persuasion on the issue as to whether development, if completed as proposed, will comply with the requirements of Edgecombe County ordinances, remains at all times on the applicant. However, the burden of persuasion on the issue of whether the application should be turned down for any reasons set forth in that aforementioned section rests on the party or parties urging that the requested permit should be denied. So you'll see that, you'll hear both tonight, from, starting with the applicant, and those, the applicant has called for to come to be in support of their application, then those who are, have, who are not in favor of the proposed project, will have the opportunity, and their submission tonight is to be reviewed by you as evidence in this process. I would, just as a reminder for myself as well, I realize that we have a larger-than-usual crowd in here tonight, so sometimes hearing what's being said from here back to the audience is difficult. So I would just ask, if you're the commissioners, if you're speaking, if you would just pull the microphone towards you, so that the audience could better hear.
At this time, we'll call from the customer on the end, interested parties with petition. Those representatives, petition, please come forward. Have you been sworn?
Yes, sir, I have. Thank you, sir. Good evening, members of the board and the community. My name is Linda Wadike, and I am with Sun Energy One. As most of you know, Sun Energy One, I think most of you know about Sun Energy One. Sun Energy One is a top-five solar developer in the country. We have an office close by here in Bethel, North Carolina. And we have been in the area for over four, five years. We built Conider, which is right in you guys back here. So we have been, Conider is now owned by Duke Energy. So we have been in the area for a while, okay? Just give you a little history about us. The project that we are proposing to construct is a Hartsmill solar project. And I wanna go do a quick overview of the project itself. As you can see on the television, I also got a map over here, and as, as they, they had mentioned previously, Hartsmill project is a 120-megawatt project located above Hartsmill Run Road and Noble Hill, and also across the Schuylkill Highway 46. This project has been going on for over four years now. We have pre-application meetings with the county planning department, and have held two previous community, community meetings, to kind of talk to the community about what we're proposing to do in the area. So that was, the last one was held in 2017, okay? We have worked with various state, federal, and also local, local agencies in regards to getting permits and making sure our due diligence is done in the county. So we have done all those processes as well. So let me talk about the Edgecombe County ordinance and how we will meet it in terms of this project. Edgecombe County, Edgecombe County has a solar ordinance, as you all know, and which is permissible in all zoning districts in the county. And one of the things that you can see on the map, I'm gonna point on that one right there to show you guys, is the setback requirements of the ordinance. So we're making sure that we meet the setbacks. Your ordinance actually have a little map that shows the zoning districts and what, what we're supposed to meet. And for Sun Energy One, we are going beyond, above and beyond on that. Instead of the 100-feet setback from any equipment to the property line, we are actually doing 100-feet setback from our fence line to our property line. So if you can see on those maps, and we see there's a higher setbacks, some of them are more than 375 feet away from the properties. In addition to that, if it's not a residential, we are going to drop 50-feet setbacks all around any other areas, but a residential. So that's what we're proposing. Additional, in addition to that, as he meant, as has been mentioned, you guys require a vegetative buffer. And the ordinance vegetative buffer is 18 feet in height at installation, or 18 inches in height at installation. We're actually going to go ahead and put in 72 inches all around properties. So we're going way above and beyond. In addition to that, for, for areas that are not residential, we're going to meet the ordinance requirement for that. As mentioned previously, there was a planning board meeting. We did have some community members come onto that planning board meeting, and some of them had concerns in regards to visualization of this solar facility from their property. So in regards to that, we, I actually personally met and called all this personnel that had comments, and met up with them on the 2nd of this year, and proposed all these new, new items to them in regards to, number one, the setbacks being higher, and two, the vegetative buffer. And I'll go detail exactly what we're doing on this map very soon, okay? And then, in regards to your heart requirement for the county ordinance, would be way below the 25-feet requirement that you guys have. Our panels are about eight, eight feet in height, we'll take it all the way high, so we are well below the 25-feet height that the county requires. We also provided the commission analysis to the county for their review, which is part of your ordinance. We performed an FAA analysis as well, and nothing is required in that arena because we are far away from any airport, we're outside this location. As you know, solar is a very spacious system. It doesn't require schools, it doesn't require EMS or anything of that nature, once it's built. However, there's various economical benefits for a facility like this to be built in the county, such as increase in annual property and income taxes. There will be up to 1,200 positions from this facility, and the construction will last about two years. Also, there'll be increased profit margin for local businesses, such as hotels, restaurants, gas stations, construction-related industries. As, as Sun Energy One, we like, we like to hire locally, and also we try to utilize, utilize local vendors whenever, to obtain materials, whatever is applicable. In addition to that, we do train the employees who are not qualified, so they can come and work for us. So what we usually do is have a career fair locally, so we can get employees that way, okay? And as you, you can tell on our drones, we have a substation system, we're the ones paying for that, and any utility upgrade is on us, not on the county or this personnel. So we have, as I mentioned previously, we have been in the county for a while, and we have been, we have been working in this county, and businesses that have kind of gained from our, from us being here. And some of the businesses are here as well, to kind of tell you guys, hey, since 2015, when Conider was built, these people have been helping us and doing business with us, in addition to us being close by with our Bethel office. In addition to that, I would like to also request, your permit lasts for six months, and I would kindly would like to request that if you guys can give us an extension on that, because as you know, for a solar facility, it's a long duration in regards to doing all the due diligence required. Some of the things that we would like to request is, if there's an extension on your permit duration at this time.
Let me stop you right there.
Thank you.
Is there something? That request, when, when and how should we handle it?
I think we'll need some time to research that, that's the first thing we're gonna do this tonight, so...
Right, okay. Additionally, for the county manager, there are four things that the commissions need to, you know, need to look into prior to making a decision. The first item, would the project materially endanger the public health? The answer to that is no. The proposed solar facility, as you know, solar has been in the community for years. Solar technology has been here, doing since the 1950s, from powering watches, to heaters, to various components. So the Conider site that was built in 2015, so the facility would not materially endanger the public health or safety. The second question that the county manager mentioned was, would the project substantially injure the family of our John or our Brooks and properties? And the answer to that is no, as well, various studies have been made, and has been, where appraisers have gone out and looked at when a solar facility is built, before this solar facility is built, and after it's built, to look at if there's any variation in prices for homes around. And in some cases, I can give an example. A project we do in Trowan County, actually, after the solar facility was built, they outsold more than one that was bought previously, before the construction of that facility. I do have an appraiser here today, and I, I certified appraiser here today, and he can talk about that, because that was a question that came up again at the planning board meeting, okay? The second question that came up, would the project be in harmony in the area it is to be located? And the answer is yes, because the proposed development would be in the harmony. As the site is composed of agricultural area, and what we propose of putting on trees and things of that nature, what the people will be seeing at the tree is really, so it will be within the harmony of what it currently is. The fourth question was, would the project be in general conformity with the land development plan or other plans officially adopted by the Board of Commissioners? And again, the answer to that is yes. As you guys know, you have a solar ordinance in place, and there's, there has been various solar facilities built in this county as well. So with that, I wanna go over the requirements that we, and the changes that we have met, so you guys can take a look at. I'm gonna go to this, is that okay, if I go to this drawing real quick? I'm sorry, thank you. And I'll show the public this while I present to you guys first. So as you can see in the, in the, in the TV as well on this screen, this is the facility that we're talking about. As well, as can be seen, if you look at the magenta line, that's our property line, is what you're seeing. The blue line is the fence line that you guys are seeing, okay? So, which are requirements, thank you. Which are requirements for ordinance, for your ordinance in regards to setbacks and things of that nature? We are actually supposed, if you're a residential property, we are actually supposed to go from the equipment, which is a panel, 100 feet to a house, whatever that distance is. So we are going above and beyond, because we didn't do that. We went ahead and put between our fence to the properly, property line, to make it 110. So if you measure from an equipment to the house, there are some areas, which is 132 feet away from the property. And also, there's, the lowest one is about, if you look at this property right here, the lowest point is about 237 feet away from the property looking from, it's solar running to the house. Okay, so we kind of went above and beyond on that arena, okay? So if you look at this measurement, you will see how many feet are on this drawing? Are you guys seeing that? In addition to that, your ordinance, like I mentioned previously, your ordinance requires a plant and 18, 18 inches, which is an evergreen, is kind of what your ordinance requires. What we are actually doing is 72 inches, which is six feet high, evergreen, is nearly see the homeless tree. Those can grow up to 25 feet at maturity, okay? So a plant and six feet will be around six feet. So for instance, if you look at this map closely, you see the straight green lines, those are where our vegetative buffer will be, okay? And around the properties, you will see these trees going up here, and also in, in the roadway around here as well. For instance, the property owner, I spoke to him on my meeting on the 2nd, he had an issue, because we're not supposed to put plants here. But he had an issue in regards to visual, again, we like to come and talk to the neighbors and compromise on things. So we decided to put trees in this area as well, so to mitigate his visualization of the solar. Again, for this property right, we did the same thing, going all around, and moved the gates away, so they're not, the entrances are away, so they are not directly seeing it from their properties, okay? Does that make sense?
Let me raise a question, in terms of what you negotiated with the, what you talked about, the petitioners, I mean, the opposition there, is, has that commitment been made to the county in terms of what you're asking for, or is that something you have agreed to do?
Because it goes beyond what the county requires, yes, it has been managed, spoke to Ms. Jenkins.
Is it part of this request?
It is, yes, it is part of this request.
So, if I could add this, so, what we will assume then is your most recent submittal, which is this. If this is approved, then this will be attached with their special use permit.
There's nothing that we need to leave to an agreement with the landlord? Everything that's been requested need to be a part of?
That is correct.
That's okay.
That's correct. So again, these are the ways that we're going beyond our... So I'm just gonna try and find a way for tonight. So, for instance... This map right here, down below is a vegetative buffer for Edgecombe County. If, this is the six-foot fence, and the one-foot topper, which is a broad wire. And if you look at this map, you can see the 18-inch that is required as a vegetative buffer. So what we are proposing to do, especially for, you know, residential properties, is this one up here. As you can see the difference in the view, again, behind the tree, you can see the fence, and again, the broad wire, again, this is six feet at planting, and these trees can grow up to 200, you know, up to 25 feet during maturity, okay? This is what we are proposing right now for residential properties, okay? And this is what I spoke to the landlord about on the 2nd of this year, okay? So I'm, I'm here, I have a lot of colleagues here as well, who, you know, like to make some comments. If you guys have any questions, please don't hesitate to ask us, but we're here to answer any questions you guys may have. I'm thinking someone here consideration.
I have a, I have a question for it. What's the total investment?
The total, I would actually like our owner to, to kind of go over that with you guys. And can you help, I'll bring him up to talk about that, is that okay?
Yes, ma'am.
We're here, we have another question.
Go ahead.
I have a, a more basic question. I read a report from the planning board, and somewhere it inferred three different maps. My question to you, is this the most current map, and is it correct in terms of wetlands, properties, the placement of the solar panels and everything?
Yes, sir, this is the, this is the, you have the wetlands in there. This is our pluming area, as you can tell, because we are looking at the boundary, I know what you're talking about during the pluming. So what you are proving is the boundary, the process that we're utilizing.
This is the latest map.
But this is the latest map.
This is the latest design. Thank you very much, Kenny Habul.
Have you, have you been sworn?
Yes, sir. Thank you, it's a pleasure to be here. We, as, as you know, our, our main headquarters is very close to where we are tonight, and we appreciate the time you're giving us, and we thank you very much. And we thank you very much over the years. I believe we bought that facility in two thousand and thirteen, and, you know, we had somewhere in a range of thirty employees. And now we have several hundred, and, uh, a lot of those employees, I'm told, over one hundred and fifty have come from this county and other counties. And we're very thankful for that, and we, uh, have worked very hard, seven days a week over the last five or six years, to, uh, continue building solar and continue building transmission solar. Um, so thank you very much for your time tonight. Just to talk a little bit about, the size of the system is similar, uh, to the one that we built here in Canada. Uh, we don't have a final size yet, pending, uh, interconnection results. We do have good interconnection study results for that location and that transmission line. Uh, and, you know, all the other various government agencies that we require to go through have been positive, uh, in terms of the CP CN and other things required by the North Carolina Utility Commission. Um, these projects generally are taking a little bit longer to build, and we think so, we estimate two years. Um, and approximately twelve hundred to fifteen hundred jobs for two years. Um, we have a project not far from here in Orlando, and, um, that's a similar sized project, and we're finding, uh, those numbers to be, to be accurate. We're also finding, after the project has been commissioned, that we are requiring more full-time personnel than realized. And, you know, these, uh, these size systems are connected to transmission are very new in the United States. So, uh, as time goes on, we found more information, and there's certainly a need for permanent employees also in the maintenance of the grounds, and also the maintenance of the electrical components themselves and the monitoring. So that's also a benefit. Um, in terms of values, pending final design, uh, my estimate would be about two hundred and fifty million dollars. Is, um, close enough at this point, and of course, there's eighty percent property tax abatement, so it looks like somewhere in the vicinity of fifty million dollar tax base to account it. Uh, and latest estimates have, have put us at approximately, uh, thirty to forty full-time jobs, uh, permanently, that we would add to the force for this particular project, uh, in addition to the temporary jobs. The other thing we noticed, uh, as we, as we sort of build in eastern North Carolina, we're the biggest builder in North Carolina, and, uh, thankfully, North Carolina is number two in the United States for installed solar capacity, and most of that is in the east here, uh, in Dominion Territory. And, uh, I think we've built about a third of all the solar in the state. Um, we are finding when we come into a town that we need tremendous local support. Uh, so for example, the project in Orlando currently, we, we have filled four different hotels, uh, permanently. Uh, permanently meaning, you know, for the, for the two-year duration of the project. Um, we've also kept three different, three to four different restaurants busy, uh, providing meals. We have utilized all the local mechanical supplies from machinery servicing. We have two hundred and fifty Chevy Colorados on site, uh, at that project, and they require servicing. We're buying everything for those locally. We're buying upwards of five to eight thousand gallons of fuel per day, per day, locally. Um, and, you know, all of these people that are moving in require, you know, all the normal services from hardware stores to restaurants to, you know, everything else you could think of, so, um, that's something to mention. Please ask me any questions that you may have. Um, we are fans of Edgecombe County, uh, we have always supported in many, many ways, not just this county, but other counties. We're not a solar company that builds and disappears, we stay here, we help. And, uh, we certainly, um, provide lots of assistance for local needs, and we'll continue to do that, because we care about the places that we build. So please, uh, feel free to ask me any questions.
Any questions? Might get some reported, yes. Next. Is anybody else in state in support of this? If, if not.
Uh.
Have you been swarmed, sir?
I have. Uh, my name's Rich Kirkland, I have a state certified general appraiser, and I'm also an MAI appraiser. I've got, uh, an impact analysis that I was asked to prepare on this project, I was hoping I could put that forward. Should be enough copies for everyone. Um, again, I, I'm a state certified appraiser, I appraise agricultural properties regularly as part of my business. Uh, praise residential development, industrial development, uh, commercial and agricultural business as well. Um, impact analysis is something I've done, I've done a lot of different types of impact analysis, where you're looking to see if there are any proposed uses, what happens to impact on property values. Uh, looked at solid waste facilities, wastewater treatment plants, I've looked at greenways, uh, uh, rock quarries, and in this case, I've been asked to look at the solar farm. I've been looking at the solar farm question for the last nine years, and that time I've looked at over five hundred solar farms, most of those across the state of North Carolina. Uh, I've looked at those as well, and about a dozen other states as well, where I'm at. Worked with about a dozen other MAIs across the country as well, compiling data, looking at the solar, solar farms, and looking at sales of properties next to existing and proposed solar farms. Uh, the report I've put forward, you can see where I've identified, just quickly, I've looked at this project, I identified all the adjoining uses, and how close adjoining homes are to the solar panels. I, I've compared that to where I've looked at other, other five hundred and some odd, uh, solar farms, compared to see how that relates and compares. In the process of compiling all this data, I've found, speaking specifically to the harmonious use question, I found that there's been a very consistent cross North Carolina, whether I look at just eastern North Carolina, the Pinafore Mountains, or if I look at the whole, you see the same patterns over and over. The primary adjoining uses are agriculture and residential. If I looked at the adjoining uses based on the number of acres adjoining, the most common adjoining use is agriculture. If I look at number of parcels, the most common adjoining use is residential. They're really located in those areas where you've got a strong agricultural residential mix. And that's true, even when I look in just this immediate area, I've looked at my report, you can see where I've identified twenty-nine different solar farms in Edgecombe County and the adjoining counties. And again, they show that same predominance, where over ninety, ninety, about ninety-four percent of all the adjoining uses are agricultural residential. Proximity to adjoining homes is actually a lot closer, and a lot of these other solar farm developments that's proposed this location. And, so again, this is a very consistent, and it's typical for where they'd be located, and it's typical as far as the surrounding uses. But speaking specifically to the impact on property values, the way you look at that is called paired sales analysis, or a matched pair analysis. And it's very straightforward, you look at something that's sold next to a solar farm, and you compare it to something that is very similar or identical, that's not next to a solar farm, and you're worried about the impact. Uh, in that report, I've included a number of sales in eastern North Carolina, including a project, um, in Edgecombe County, showing matched pairs, and show consistently no impact on joint farm values. Projects similar to seventy-five, and higher megawatts, very similar sized projects as this one, including some that stretched outside of eastern North Carolina, they're included in the report. I'd be happy to go over specific details, I'm just getting the highlights. But again, the data is showing consistently that, that there is no impact on adjoining residential uses. And I've also looked at the joining farm sales, and we found no impact on adjoining farm sales. Uh, again, uh, the data is presented there, I'd be happy to go over specific examples or details if you need to. But it is my professional opinion that this project as proposed will have no impact on joint property values. It's also my professional opinion that this is a harmonious location for a solar farm, consistent with where solar farms are located across eastern, all of North Carolina. I'd be happy to answer a question.
Any questions, Mr.?
I got one question. I know you, uh, I read the analysis of your report, my question is kind of a grassroots question. Even though it does affect the value of the property or the land, is there any data that shows any situation where it prohibited or slowed down, or didn't sell because of solar farms?
There's specifically, I, I, I'll cite you specific examples. Uh, the AMS solar farm in Goldsboro, this is really a textbook example, and, uh, the data is included in that report. The reason I say it's textbook one, there was an ongoing subdivision that was started before the solar farm came in. And solar farm got developed and built, and then new homes continued being built. The first thing to note is that the homes that were built after the solar farm was, uh, put in, were actually larger and more expensive. They actually up to, and that was not specific to the solar farm going in, it was just the market was trending upwards. The, uh, I spoke to the developers, as far as how quickly they sold out those lots. They sold out their lots and inventory at the same timeframe they were reaching experience, so it had no impact on how quickly they sold their lots. Uh, the other points to point out there is that, uh, the matched pairs, I've got multiple matched pairs out of the subdivision, but essentially, the exact same floor plan, sold for the exact same price, regardless of whether it joined the solar farm, or it was not adjoining the solar farm. And then there was a sale and a resale of the exact same property, a home that was bought by, from the builder, by her homeowner. They lived there for three years, three years later they sold it, and it showed typical appreciation. So it sold for more after three years, but at a rate consistent with what you'd expect, whether there's a solar farm there or not. So all the, all the dimensions of value that you could really look at, whether it's the initial impact on value, how quickly it sold, and appreciation, all of them are showing no impact on that one example.
Any other questions, Mr.? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I have a question about Mr. Kirkland.
You have a question?
I would note, is the owner of the property?
Yes, there are a couple of owners, um, so welcome to my hearing.
You know, they won't say it last, you know? They're in favor.
I'm happy to speak, I'm happy to speak up, and I didn't know if you wanted all the in favor right now, but.
Have you been swarmed? Anybody that's been swarmed, if you would like to speak, you don't have to speak. Okay, it's up to you.
You want to hear somebody in favor, then I'd, I'd definitely speak up. My name's Bill, my name's Bill Park. Uh, my family represents, uh, the land, uh, that is north of Highway sixty-four. Um, like a lot of people here, we've been here for a lot of generations. Uh, this pro- this, uh, project was brought to me, the idea of it, um, four, uh, four plus years ago. And we don't do anything lightly, um, we've been here, we've been trying to be good citizens of the county. Um, I did my due diligence into not only this company, Solar, because we do own some farmland around there, some other land around there, did my due diligence, um, and came to the conclusion that for my family, and our family discussion, that it was a good plan for us. Um, and so we are, um, um, we believe in property rights, we believe that if you follow all the stuff, you ought to be able to do what you want to with your land. I think most everybody here that owns property, when they talk about their property, they would agree. Um, but most fathers speak up that I'm in favor of Edgecombe County. And at the planning meeting, there were a few comments that were made, like us versus them, the citizens versus the county. And I just don't see it that way. And this county is, y'all know this better than I do, it's a challenged relatively, it's a wonderful place, right? But it's a relatively poor place, and we have a tax base issue, and we have a tax rate issue as well. And you guys have done a wonderful job of working that in the opposite direction. And I do feel like that we are on the precipice of a turn for this county, which is great. But this project, solar energy, which does not, we've spoken of earlier, no crime rate comes with it, no additional demand on schools, all that kind of stuff, it doesn't pollute. And I consider myself a steward, and I have, have been of this land, so it was not an easy decision for us to make. But it is a net winner for the county, it gives and doesn't take from that perspective. And so that's why I hope that the commissioners will do like they have in the past, and continue to support, uh, this for the county's sake. Thank you.
Can I ask one question?
Go ahead.
Mr. Park.
Yes, sir.
Would, would the owners who are here come up here, would you tell us what portion or percentage you own of what's being, just a guess?
Right, you mean, so my family owns that north, and I guess by looking at that map, that's maybe half, maybe a little bit more.
Yes, cheers.
Yes, sir.
Did I ask you, have you been swarmed, sir?
You did.
Okay. Have you been swarmed?
Yes, sir. I'm Hunter Quincy, and I'm here with my brother Stacy and my father Tommy. We own about a third of the land, what's south of sixty-four, and, uh, we farm together. I've farmed my whole life since I've known what I was doing. Um, our sole income comes from agriculture, and everything we do, our employees, it's all agriculture. We don't, it's row crops and nothing else. So that's, that's, as Bill mentioned, about four and a half years ago, we started processing, looking at outside income to stabilize our business, to be honest. Agriculture requires rain at the right time, um, divi- companies to want our product on the day to get carried, which is not guaranteed commodity prices to be right. It's a lot, and it's a yearly process of, of turnover, so two or three bad years is detrimental for us, and, and farmers are going out fairly quickly, as you all know. We can make it in two or three years, uh, five to seven years probably, but ten years long-term next generation. It's, we have to have some outside income, to be honest, to, to continue to, uh, work the fields. I, I understand the concern about the view of what our land will look like after, you know, if the, if the product is approved. I, I've been raising this land, I understand, I, I, it surrounds my house on three sides, so I understand, but I just wanted you, everyone here, to understand why, you know, we're looking, security is what, what we're looking for. We feel like this will provide what we need.
Questions? Any questions? Anybody else? Is there none?
Good evening, my name's Amanda, um, I work for Sun Energy, and I'm also a resident of Edgecombe County. Um, I have worked with them for about three and a half years, almost four years. It is a wonderful company, we employ a lot of people, and I deal with a lot of those people one-on-one every day. Um, also, I am, was born and bred in Abrams, my cousin and my family are here, um, with Abrams. We eat them a lot in Edgecombe County, um, because like, uh, Linda said, we do like to support local, always. And in the Bethel office, which is where I work, I order a lot of fuel and those kinds of things, and we order from as close as that site as possible, whether it's food, whether it's gas, as they said. Um, and we try to hire local. And I just hope that you guys will support it. Again, I am an Edgecombe County resident, this project is going to be amazing. The company I work for is amazing, and I just hope y'all stand behind us.
Anybody else? Is there an opposition? Is there something to come forward, it's fifty? You've been swarmed?
Yes, yes, sir. My name is David, and I reside in Rocketville, North Carolina. But I moved here, I used to live in Edgecombe County, but I would like to say for this company, I've been in solar for seven years. And it will boost the economy here with all the employees that it will employ, plus the revenue for all the restaurants and different items you need in this county. And I must say, for me and my family, I, I couldn't survive without solar. It's, it's, it's a good thing to be employed with Sun Energy, for its wage increases, some of the best wages it'll bring to this county for unemployed people. And I just say, I stand in favor of this company.
God bless.
Hi, my name is Yvonne Consino, and I'm also a Sun Energy One employee. I myself have been in solar for about five years, and I have seen, I've been in this area for about three years now. Solar brought me here, and I've stayed here. I know a lot of the people in this county and the surrounding counties, and solar is kind of like a community. When we go from one project to the next project, and we also bring in the local help, whether it's from this county or the next, the neighboring county, and we teach them. They don't just get a job, we teach them a trade, something that they can be proud of and be a part of, and they stick with us. And I can't live without solar, that's my craft. That's what I use to support my family, and that's what a lot of the other people in this area do as well. So I'm very much in favor of solar.
Any questions? Thank you.
Hey, you.
Have you been swarmed, sir?
Yes, sir. I've been, I work for South Beach and Metro, also, and Scott and that. Um, we supply them with a lot, they're good people, I lived in Edgecombe County all my life. Um, if you're right out, notice the other solar farms were nicely, neat, kept up, just, I mean, it's just an ongoing thing. We need it very much.
Any questions? Thank you, sir.
I'm having a project, I did a twenty-seven, we're now heart of the room, I am.
I'm having a product, I live in Quincy, we're now heart of the road, I am poor. Everybody know that. I've been there for forty-one years, I've been standing there the rest of my life, but what you gotta do, do it.
Anybody else? Anybody else get to speak for our organs? Please come forward, sir.
Hey, restricted fifteen seventy-five horse, we run road, and I'm against it, and I've been out here for forty-three years, and I think it's going to be a detriment to the community. And Linda said it was no harmful chemicals in the solar panel. My nephew looked it up on Google, it's got five harmful chemicals in this panel. It's got cadium, I think lead, and three or four more I can't even pronounce the name of. But she said you could take it back to landfill when they decommission them, I don't think so. And I'm, it's set against it, and I'm surrounded on three sides by it, and I don't get up every morning looking at those things. When I had beautiful trees before Mr. Clark, well, I think that's not him, buddy, Mr. Sallmore. I'm against it.
Anybody, any questions?
I got one, Mr. Clark. I think for the benefit of everybody, I, I've received quite a few questions about this indeed the first time. But I think there are a lot of questions about the physical impact, but one of the biggest questions that seems to recur of somebody who addresses this, at the end of the lease, decommissioned the equipment, what will happen? Who's responsible? What can or can't be done to make sure it's not left there? So, anybody that, if somebody can address that.
Sure, so, yes, the ordinance...
You're coming, you're coming, I won't let you speak, but go ahead.
Right, the ordinance does require in their submission that they have a decommissioning plan. They have to, number one, either provide a, a bond that would cover the required cost of decommissioning or give evidence that there will be value left sufficient to, that there's some salvageable value in it so that it can be decommissioned. And so, I don't know, maybe they will give you more details about the process itself.
And, and the one thing I would add is that if you go to address this, let's say the company goes broke. What happens?
No problem, I'm happy to answer that, just in, in response to the gentleman's comment previously about poisons or substances, that, what was mentioned was selenide, gallium, and various other chemicals, that has nothing to do with the solar panels we use. So, that, that technology is called thin film. We don't use thin film, these are multi-crystalline panels which are made from sand. You can break the panel, take the cell and put it in your mouth. There's absolutely no poisons, no harm. It is correct on the chemicals, but that's another technology. And that's called thin film solar. Now, those companies that manufacture that, the US companies for example, will also tell you that that's not poisonous. I don't know, we don't use those. But the ones we use, the most common is ninety percent of the planet, and they're made from sand. And in fact, my countertop at home is made from solar panels. And my children eat directly off the countertop. So, there's absolutely no poisons. Just talk about decommissioning. That's, that's, it's a moving target because we don't know how long the panels last. But what we are finding, the latest research is showing thirty-five years old. There are some panels that were made by BP, BP Oil. And they're between thirty and forty years old, and we're finding they're still at eighty-eight percent of their efficiency. So, we don't see this as something that needs to be pulled out and rectified or cleaned up. The other thing I would say is that for some reason, a company like ours, or a utility, and, and, you know, ninety-five percent of all these systems are owned by utilities, so they're protected under federal law. There's millions and millions of dollars of copper in the system. So, believe me, if somebody locked the gate and went away, there's a lot more value there than the land underneath it. So, we have never in twenty-two years of building Solar, for me personally, I lecture at MIT on Solar from time to time. I have never seen an abandoned solar system anywhere in the world. I have never seen that, because the value was too great, they produced live energy. It would be impossible for that to happen, in terms of our research.
As best I can recall, I believe the ordinance says you want or negotiating with the landowner and bond or negotiating with the landowner in terms of salvageable value, is that correct?
Right, so, it, it, it becomes between the, the company and the landowner in their lease agreement as to the stipulations of that. So, let's say if Sun Energy were to walk away, you know, a year from now, then that's, you know, a valuable commodity that's on that, that landowner's property. So, then it would be, but they have to show to us that either they have a bond that will protect the landowner, or there'd be money, or, in, in every case we've seen so far, is that they show that there is salvageable value enough, that somebody will come and take it.
But the salvage of valuable, value is between the landowner and the company.
That's correct, that's right.
Which means that the responsibility, but then the landowner responsible to this county to make sure that the land is cleaned. So, if, if there's a default in that agreement, we go after the landlord. In terms of, is there something that it needs to be cleaned up? It's responsibility to the county to make sure that it's clean. So, that action would be between the county and the landlord, am I correct? Or if I'm not correct, okay.
If, if they're just leaving and they're not serving any purpose, and it's junk material, isn't it, sir?
Then we've got, we've got something out there in terms of, of, that we have to deal with from an inspection standpoint, in terms of, so... It's something that is a moving target, but I don't think, I don't think we need necessarily taking certain, that nothing has been left. We have to make sure that something is in place to make sure that that happens.
And just as a rule of thumb, if we use a hundred acres as a guide, in terms of the copper that's in the system, at half of its lowest value recorded, there's multi-millions of dollars worth of copper per hundred acres versus about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for a contractor to come and bulldoze the whole lot and move it. So, there's, there's, as a rule of thumb, it's eight to twelve times more value in the system components if they are left abandoned than it is to clean them up.
But in the lease agreement, we have to make sure that something is there to make that happen, is that correct?
No, we have to make sure, they have to submit to us their plan for decommissioning. And they have to show to us that there is, there will be value in the components of it at the end of the project.
And the landlord has to satisfy that.
That's right. And us requiring that is really to help protect the landowner. Because it really becomes, you know, either their asset or liability at the end of the project.
Any other questions?
So, so the actual fact is that Sun Energy went from the landowner...
That's the landlord. We just, this is between them and the landlord.
The landlord keeps owning the land.
Right, it's a lease agreement.
And, and he makes money, or she makes money from Sun Energy.
Who's leasing the project?
But if Sun Energy takes off and leave the landowner with the land and...
With the equipment.
The equipment, it's valuable equipment that becomes the landlord. That's, that's the landlord's responsibility.
Another question? Any other opposition? Is there anybody that gets here to speak?
My name is George Strickland.
Have you been sworn?
Yes, I have. I'm here just like, well, I'm here to protect my family, not just you. I've lived in that house forty years, I've worked days, years, to pay for what I got. And eagles come, solar panels side of me, front of me, and behind me. Who was the one that served talking about the property back? Who paid him? Well, you can't tell me, and I don't think none of y'all believe that, that you can put panels sold all around solar panels, all around your house, and the value of your property will not go down. You, I don't believe it, and I don't think y'all do either. But I'm here to protect my interest, just like you. Thank you.
Any questions? Is there anybody else here to speak?
Good afternoon, John Killebrew.
Have you been sworn?
I have been sworn in, sir. Well, thank the commissioners for having us here tonight, and thank the audience for being here. I've sort of been in on this thing since the very beginning. I was on the planning board when the first proposal for Sun Energy came across. At the time, it seemed, and, and it may still be a good idea, I've just got a lot of questions on this. At that time, it was presented to the planning board as a tax, was going to be, tax rate was possibly going to be running out. And the county needed to act to get the revenue in. I agree with all the comments, we need the revenue, we can get here in Edgecombe County. And I was a part of welcoming Sun Energy to the county. I still don't have any regrets on that, at this point. Sun Energy has met with me, has met with my family this week. London, what, DK? Has been great, in fact, my mother told me not to give her a hard time. She made a good impression on part of the family here in Holland.
You did, yeah.
But I, I do have some concerns. First of all, Mr. Boss, I believe you asked about the map. And I just want to point out that the map shows the boundaries, it does not show the solar panels, I don't believe. So, they're not positioned on the map. We don't really know from this map where the file of solar panels are going to go. Is that correct to anyone from Sun Energy?
And please respond to that, anybody from Sun Energy. I'm looking at, in effect, I'm looking at solar panels.
So...
Do you have a design? The average setback is approximately three hundred feet.
Well, does that answer his question?
Yes.
The white areas are the wider, the smaller.
The white areas are solar, are...
They're not proposed, they're going to be exactly where we see them on this map. Sorry?
Yes, that's the latest design.
That's the latest design right now.
But is there a change?
Very minimal.
Well, let me ask the question.
Because it's designed electrically.
So, we are, what are we being asked to approve?
So, the only, if there's a change, it can change as long as it does not...
Change the boundary.
Violate the ordinance itself. In other words, if they make changes from here tonight, what they propose, as long as it does not encroach any closer than what the setbacks require in those types of things?
The boundaries and the setbacks and the buffers, with those are the things that we are approving.
That's right.
Okay. But we are not necessarily approving how those panels can lay out on that.
Exactly, that's right.
That's what I was saying, it is, I just want to make sure that everyone else is with me. Second thing, and the chart is turned backwards now, but how long can I expect our trees to look like that chart?
So, at planting, it would be six feet.
I know what, that's not, the question, the question is, how long before my trees, if I'm my house, are going to look like you're drawing here? What's the maturity of these trees?
These trees get, get up to twenty-five feet.
I, I know, I've done my research on the trees, I'm a far greater than that.
That's, that's not...
If you could ask the questions, and then they...
Yeah, ask, ask the question to...
Register the question, and they'll come out to us.
And, and you want to kind of control them.
When will these trees fill in as thickly as shown on your chart?
I can't control how fast the trees grow, but how about we add some more trees?
Well, let me, let me ask the question, let me ask this question. What are the hyper requirements on our orders?
Eighteen inches, at planting.
At planting.
At planting.
Thirty-six.
So, what they are proposing would meet the requirements of the order?
It exceeds the requirement.
If they, if they, if they plant what they are proposing, does it meet the requirements of the order?
Yes, it exceeds the requirement.
Okay, so what, what they are proposing is above the requirement. So, I, I need your questions, sir, but, uh, go ahead.
Yes, it's definitely above the requirements, and as I said, I was a part of those original requirements. I'm just presenting to you that maybe those requirements aren't what we need to go forward with.
And, and if, if that is the case, then at some time, a request can be made to change that ordinance. But what we are doing now is based on what this ordinance requires.
I, I understand that. I'm just saying that you were given a picture, nice, laid out, pretty green trees, all they crossed, and told we wouldn't be seeing it. If you go down to Cadida, you see it. That's, that's fact.
And I'm listening.
And I'm just suggesting, and maybe it's going to be a future change. But what we're doing is not going to look like that day one. And I just want everybody to understand that. The other question I'd like to ask of some of the energy people. You put one solar farm in, I believe in Edgecombe County, and that's been sold to Duke, is that correct?
It was theirs from the beginning. We were the builder.
You were the builder. You're going to be the builder on this one and the owner, and can you tell us about how long you think that might be? I know I'm putting you on the spot here, but again, the presentation was made to us that you're a part of this community, you won't be a part of it, and I have no reason to believe you're not sincere in that. But you've got one solar farm, you don't own it. Of all the solar farms you've built in North Carolina, what percentage do you still own?
Pretty bad, huh?
About half. I heard twenty percent. I'm not trying to put anybody on the spot here, folks. Trying to make sure we all know what we're going forward. So...
He's answered that, he's giving us, he's giving us his answer.
The other thing that came up just, that you brought up, Mr. Evans, just a minute ago, was the enforcement moving forward with this. I approached our planning department right after the last planning board meeting. I'd been told that the trees that weren't planted, but had died down at Duke, that they had been in touch with Duke, and letters were written to Duke Power requesting that they take some action and get those trees planted. The next morning, I went down to the planning department, I asked for a copy of those letters. Subsequently found out that letters had not been written. There'd been a phone call there. I just want to make sure that we, moving forward, that our planning department does have your backing and a very strict set of rules and some actions if we don't, if we don't meet these rules, that the solar energy people don't live up to what we're asking. And they certainly are these minimums, I'm not questioning that at all. And I really appreciate the offer to go beyond this. I just don't want anybody to, to walk out of here without, at least sometimes, some, some reason to back this up some teeth into the rules we're putting forward. Right now, you've got a four-foot minimum height and maturity requirement, I believe, is that right, Mr. Evans?
I believe that's right.
I think that's right. Four foot on a seven-foot fence, in whole lot.
And what I really think is, is these kind of meetings that we might bring out need for changes. And if we bring out those need for changes, I would suggest that citizens such as you through our planning board process, make a recommendation for those changes. And I'm quite sure that this board would certainly consider any recommended changes that come from our community in terms that would strengthen what we have here. But I do believe tonight, we're dealing with what we've got.
I, I agree with you.
Okay.
I'm not arguing that at all. I just want to all to know...
And, and I guess my question to you, Mr. Drew, is, is, what is it about you and, you have seen, and you assisting us in initiating the process of bringing solar to our county, what is it you have seen that probably has changed some of your thinking on it?
The owner is being my front yard or the backyard. When I was on the planning board...
But if somebody else's land, it's not your land.
Yes, sir, it's not my backyard, but, no, really, when, when we were approached with Cadida from a planning board...
Oh, so it's all right to put it in somebody else's yard?
Nobody complained, nobody complained ever.
It was in somebody else's yard? It was somebody's...
Nobody down there said a word.
But it was in somebody else's yard?
Never happened.
Go ahead.
Almost happened.
All right, okay, all right, all right. I can follow that, I can follow that.
We're good.
Not in my backyard, go ahead. Yes, sir.
This is not in somebody's yard, this is next to that property.
Well, I, I, I hear, I hear your thinking on it, okay, I hear your question.
I've got a question.
Go, go ahead.
You slide it over here. This is to our attorney. What is our recourse of action if a corporation doesn't follow the ordinance for live vegetation planted?
I don't believe there's enforcement provision in the vegetation requirement. But it's something that staff has considered.
That's something we've already talked, talked these teeth that we need to add, it's something we need to revise.
But it sounds like it's something also that can be considered, not that this conversation is raised, with the landlords and their leases. Could it? So the landlords now are in power in their leases based on this conversation? If their leases are not there to, to deal with that in their lease agreement? Because it can be covered in orders, but whatever does not happen out there, it's still our responsibility to go after the landlord.
I have a follow-up question as well.
Hold, hold your point, sir, hold your point, I'll, I would allow you to speak.
Have we had a, have we had any response from Duke Energy? And what has been their response when we, when we requested replanting and vegetation?
They, they have been very responsive to it, they have not argued against it at all, they've already gone out and, uh, taken a look at it. I think another thing that we need to take a look at is, if we make some revisions, is not only the requirements for what is planted, but also when it's planted. Because depending on the time of the year, they plant it just so they can say it's done, but it's not the appropriate time, it's not gonna live anywhere, or have a very difficult time living anyway. So that's gonna be something else we'll need to take a look at. But they've been very responsive, and they've not balked against it at all.
So it's our understanding that Duke is going to replace what vegetation may not be living today?
That's right.
And at, this an estimate, are we talking what percent of vegetation that Canita's, Duke Energy site, that may not be living today?
I don't.
Of a percent of what is planted?
Well, maybe, oh.
Excuse me?
Based upon my sight, this, I'm not a landscape architect, but visually, most of that property is, um, it's, it's not living. It's, most of vegetation is not living right now.
So they'd have to go back and replace the majority of it?
Yes, and they have, have, have indicated to us there is a plan set to replant the entire site, as well as that first site on Canita One. They've already put in new vegetation for that property this week.
Okay, thank you, that was my question.
And I, and I don't know if you're right, but I think we're kind of getting off. But the intent of this is, intent of this meeting is, so let's get back on track in terms of, of, uh, we're here for the special use permit, not necessarily for correcting the ordinance. Although we were taking consideration what is said here, or correcting, please continue, sir.
I would admit, that's what I want to say, sir. Appreciate your interest.
Sir, I believe you had a question?
Yeah, who are they enforcing the yard's order?
I didn't hear your question.
Who are they enforcing the yard's orders?
Who enforces our ordinance?
Well, our, our, well, planning board is usually the ones that will, will, if there isn't, it's, it's not necessary that somebody go around and inspect it. But it is when, when these issues, when they come to our attention, they will inspect it, and they will contact the necessary, uh, agencies or owners to take corrective action. It's, it's in the planning, in the planning department and our management.
Well, the planning department says you can't plant vegetation in the wintertime, which is wrong, when did you plant it?
Uh, I'm, I can't answer none of that, sir, that, and, and the planning department is not an expert at that either, okay? So, so I'm not, I'm not gonna give them the credit, even if they said, you know, uh, uh, they, that's, that's something that we would entertain, maybe in somebody that
That's due to the price.
Right, that was, would, would probably be our extension service more closely than anybody else, okay? So we, we would refer that to some of that, to extension, that would help our planning department and help our management in making those decisions. We do have a resource available somewhere that we can call on. Did you have a question, sir, or comment? You, I think you started.
Uh, yes, sir, I, I was just gonna tell Cynthia Jones that, uh, my name's James Mendenhall.
You have you been sworn?
I have not.
You, you can be sworn, if you like.
I'm just representing Duke, sir, and later.
Where, where you, would you stand, would you be sworn?
I will.
In order to make comments, I think you need to be sworn, sir, please. Please state your name. Please state your name.
My name is James Robert Mendenhall.
Would you please be sworn in?
Will you swear or affirm that the evidence that you gave to the board and its actions shall be the truth, the holy truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Go ahead, please state your name again.
That's all right, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, good talking to you.
Uh, yes, sir, my name, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for having me, uh, my name is James Mendenhall. I was invited by Cynthia Jones, uh, to represent Duke and talk about the, uh, our plans and our actions for the vegetation buffers at the sites of Edgecombe County. Uh, just a quick history, about thirtieth of August of this, uh, two thousand eighteen, Cynthia from the planning department contacted Duke with some concerns about the vegetation buffers around the Tarborough and the Canita sites. And brought to our attention that the, uh, the buffer was out of standards. Uh, she gave us a copy of both the, uh, uh, the ordinance and the special permit for the Tarborough site. Uh, the Tarborough's, the ordinance states four feet on center, uh, along the fence lines facing the, the roads. Tarborough actually had a special permit, and they were actually eight feet on center, and they specified wax myrtles. Uh, we went and investigated the, uh, vegetation buffer, and we found that all the trees, one hundred percent, were dead. Uh, that was August the thirtieth. Uh, my actions then were to, uh, submit an RTA, try to determine what the cause of the dead trees were. Was it due to soil composition, trees, uh, drainage, I don't know, I'm not an expert. Uh, but an RTA was submitted, request for technical assistance. Uh, we were assigned a project manager that came down, contacted Brown's Landscaping. Uh, they came and inspected the site, and, uh, what they determined was that the vegetation buffer was planted in July of, uh, two thousand, uh, I believe sixteen. And, uh, that was the cause of the death of the trees. The, the wax myrtles were considered a robust tree, shrub, evergreen, and, uh, they were, uh, it was brought to my attention that the wax myrtles can thrive in moist conditions and dry conditions once they get settled in the ground. Uh, the cause of death for a hundred percent of the trees was due to, uh, just being planted in mid-July in the heat. Uh, that, like I said, that, that was brought to my attention, I, August the thirtieth, and by December the seventh, we had removed and replaced, uh, one hundred percent of the evergreens with wax myrtles. And, uh, brought Cynthia's attention, uh, that we were trying to maintain compliance with the ordinance. Uh, let's see, Canita, uh, we do not own, Duke Energy does not own Canita One, we own Canita Two, which is, uh, surrounded by the borders of Highway forty-two and sixty-four. It's not indicated on that map, but, uh, we, uh, we have taken action on that site as well. We have already, uh, completed a, uh, walk down of the fence line. We do not have an approved vegetation plan for Canita Two. The site, uh, went to substantial completion prior to any kind of plan being approved. Uh, talked to Cynthia, there is a vegetation footprint in place, uh, with, was in accordance with the ordinance, which is, the trees are actually four feet staggered off-center, but, uh, the trees are four feet, uh, off-center. And, uh, the trees are Nellie Stevens. Not all the trees, this, Canita Two is not as bad as, as Tarborough was. Tarborough was a hundred percent lost. Uh, Canita Two, we actually see little areas, patches where groups of shrubs have died, and sparsely throughout the fence line, there's a tree here and a tree there. We have gone and marked those, uh, trees with, uh, orange flags and marking tape. Uh, and, and actually, today, we actually got a count of six hundred and five trees that need to be replaced. Uh, that's a little bit more than we did at Tarborough, Tarborough was about four hundred and twenty-five trees. And that was actually one of our milestones for an RTA, requesting additional assistance for Canita because of different location, different drainage. And, uh, so we're, we're actually gonna follow the same process and hopefully have this resolved before early spring. One of the things we did at Tarborough that we did, that, uh, we hope that, uh, doesn't repeat itself, is that we planted this in, uh, late fall. Uh, and hopefully we'll take care of Canita early spring and, uh, get everything, uh, back to standard within the ordinance.
So you're saying that based on what, Duke Energy owns, corrective actions is intended?
That is correct, sir.
Thank you, sir. Any question? Thank you, sir. Is there anybody else who could? Bye.
Janice Weston, have you been sworn in? Y'all want to know about the construction, when they come in to do the land and stuff around our houses and mess? Will they clean it up? Like the roads, you know, it would be, there would be trucks under roads and mess, will it affect the roads? And if it does, will they come back and straighten the roads up and stuff?
Would you cover response there?
Uh, yes, absolutely, we, we always have, I think all the people that know our company knows that we do the right thing and we clean up. In this particular case, like all large systems, we place a bond with DOT, and, uh, that's a cash bond. And, uh, it's our responsibility to make sure the road's not damaged and the road is clean at all times. And, uh, any of you are welcome to visit the Alllander Hostel site, where we have street sweepers, uh, three times a day. And we've also placed a bond there and agreed with the DOT to replace the whole road at the end, uh, you know, if there was some damage.
It, it might be needed, so stand there. Go right here.
Okay, and, uh, another thing is, um, y'all were talking about the landowners. If they, the, uh, solar panels don't live up to their deal, the landowners will do it, you know, to take care of all the solar panels and mess.
I, I don't think I said it like that. I said that it's gonna be the responsibility. Oh.
The landowners.
Right, right.
But when we had a meeting with that lady, pronounce the name, she said that they were gonna try to buy the land. So if they don't own up to it, and they own the land, who's gonna be responsible then?
If they own the land, they have a responsibility to the county.
Uh-huh.
Okay, it becomes the county to, with whoever the landlord is.
Okay, I know, she said that she was gonna, they were gonna try to buy the land.
And that's between them and the landlord.
I know, but it'd be us looking at it.
Right, right.
And then somebody commented about the Canita, if trees, and even though he did say they, you know, took care of it, now, why did it take so long? One guy in the meeting said it would two years been looking like that. Is there any way we could get a number? If we see that happening, that we can call?
Well, my suggestion is, I think the easiest way for you to do it is, is, is call the county, call inspections. I think we can be, we're gonna be able to get a better response from a corporate giant than you are, okay? Uh, they, if they wanna do business in this county, they gotta do something to keep us happy. And they have to be responsive now. One of the problems that RTA, well, 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 RTA, he's gotta go through a process, and that process is lengthy. And so in terms of a, of a timeframe, I think it's gonna be unlikely that we're gonna, if we get one, it's not gonna be one that they're gonna, that they're gonna be able to hold to. So it's gonna be a process, but I really think as long as they're doing business in this county, we've got some leverage. And we will use, what I will say, is we will use the leverage of this county, uh, to make sure that if they continue, want to continue to do business in this county and other counties, I think we will use the leverage of the county to make sure that they stay in compliance. We will, we will commit to that, okay? Is there anybody else that got any questions that were sworn? That they might want to ask that's not been addressed? If not, did you have another comment, sir? At this time, to the things that we've heard and heard about in East City, I'm going to adjourn the public hearing. And in consideration, this for approval, that all of the Edgecombe County Unified Development Orders standards have been met. And based on that presentation, some of the comments we've heard have not been in reference to the ordinance, there's just been comments that they didn't want them for other reasons. I'm going to raise the question, uh, the staff, without turning, based on, do you know of anything recent here, uh, that our Unified Development Order has not been met, based on the presentation?
Yes, sir, that's your decision.
Do you know of any reason? Do, I, I understand the decision, but I need to hear something from you in terms of your review. Do you know of any reason that's been presented here?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So is there a motion?
So moved that we adopt the, uh, the motion that, that all of the
Unified Development Orders?
Ordinances have been met.
Is there a second? Are there questions from this board? If not, all in favor, let it be known by the votes side, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none, that is unanimous decision, but others are present. The next consideration is the application process is complete.
So your next consideration is, uh, whether or not to approve the issuance of the special use permit itself?
I make a motion that we approve the special use permit.
Is there a second? Are there any questions? If not, all in favor, let it be known by the votes side, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none, special use permit is approved. All the recommendations filed just by the planning board have been approved. I would just like to say, based on some of the comments we've said, we've heard, that might, we might need to review some of the things that are in our ordinance. And some of the things that we've heard, we, we request of staff, request of our management team, and anything that you need to look at, our attorney, request of our planning director, to look at some of the comments that have been made and see if there needs to be changes in our ordinance to strengthen that. Expresses I think we need to look at, probably at the end of the list here, and how we look at the cleanup. Okay, I'm suggesting that we, we do that, because our, rather than hearing the, the, the landowners, the option, I believe we need a bonding. I believe we need a bonding, that is something that we take, rather than, also the landowners, it's something to look at in a way, okay? Any other comments about this board? If not, at this time, ladies and gentlemen, some of you might want to leave, so I'll take about ten minutes. At this time, the scheduled four minutes, we said.
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. Drew, we have the night share plea act, and some would like to come before you and give you an update, uh, would you like to invite the chair some forward?
Thank you, sir.
Happy New Year, guys, Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Forward, I'm sorry. Uh, I, I do wanna send an invitation, and, and, please forgive me, we're starting our first annual, uh, Sheriff's Office Academy, and I would get that flyer, basically, you guys wanna offer an invitation to our county manager. And, uh, we've been in conversation, I do wanna let you guys know, we've been in conversation, thank for the meetings you've had with me. So I do wanna offer that invitation to you guys, and it will be starting February the twenty-eighth, uh, through April the eighteenth, I would get a flyer out to you guys. Uh, every Thursday for eight weeks, um, from six p.m. to nine p.m., we've been discussing a whole lot of law enforcement entities. Uh, twenty-five citizens, it'd be a big class, twenty-five citizens with our county manager with the invitation and our seven commissioners, so I would get some information to you guys, yeah? From the last time that I came here, and once, guys, I just wanna thank our county manager, because we've been at the table talking. I was asking to bring them to be reviewed by the board and the county manager, and, and I'm sure that we got that manual, uh, hope it was helpful to you guys. Uh, it was fair enough a question that we, that, uh, I found that we move forward and find a solution for the low pay for our agent of the county sheriff's office. I had one of my attendants deliver that manual containing possible increases of two-point-five percent, five percent, seven percent, and ten percent. However, I'm, I'm bored with the suggestion that, uh, was made in November meeting to, why not just move all from minimum to medium with regards to use of service at the sheriff's office? Our Edgecombe County Sheriff's Office staff continues to make me proud and elude them, I'm really proud of the men and women of the sheriff's office sitting behind me. The dedication and willingness to work long hours, complete tasks, second to none in this region, if not in the state. One would wonder why I keep pursuing and revising and paying salaries for my staff, and I One would wonder why I keep pursuing and revising paying salaries for my staff, and I won't be before you long. Been a long night already. November the ninth, one of my detention supervisors, and these are the things that I witnessed over the last month. One of my detention supervisor's son was housed in our jail and I can see the hurting pain in her face. The mother's love. So then she had to make a decision, notified me and I had to make a decision to move her son somewhere else. But in the meantime, that's the hurting pain and the stress that's, that's going on within Edgecombe Sheriff's Office. On December the third, one of my dispatch supervisors answered the nine one one line. And unfortunately, it was his dad on the other end of the phone saying that his mom had a heart attack. At that time, within five seconds of the call, I, I just coincidentally walked into a comm center and I could tell him to go home. On December the tenth, which was my birthday, I get a phone call that one of my deputy's daughters was involved in a rape. One of my patrol supervisors headed on forty-three to a car and traveling behind him was another deputy. He witnessed his daughter in the driveway. He passed by his daughter. He then saw no headlights behind him. His daughter pulled out in front of a deputy. And when he gets there, the deputy is helping his daughter. He didn't even know it was his daughter that was involved in the rape. So these are some of the things that I'm witnessing from our agency, that our young men and women, and they're a great group. It's good to have a support staff like you see behind me. It is a team effort. Due to the three homicides in Rocky Mountain, I close. Due to the three homicides in Rocky Mountain in the last six days, we've been requested to partnership with Rocky Mountain TV and Nash County Sheriff's Office, talking to citizens, removing criminals, reducing crime, building bonds with all the citizens around the Rocky Mountain area. Because it's disheartening when you get three homicides in less than six days. So we've been requesting to come in. And there's no doubt in my mind that I'm bringing the most elite group to the city of Rocky Mountain, but the most underpaid group to the city of Rocky Mountain. We do our part to make Edgecombe County proud. I stand before you guys to say that. Our main objective is to keep our customers, which are our citizens of Edgecombe County, safe and happy with our law enforcement services. Public safety should be dear and near to all of us. As I close, as the sheriff and leader of Edgecombe County, I do recognize that we can always do better to improve the quality of life of the citizens here in Edgecombe County. I do recognize that. However, let us remember that often the only thing that allows us to live freely, after all we've heard tonight, this could not be possible without public safety. You guys agree? Could not be possible with all this strength in numbers and what we do outside of these laws. Public safety is key. The blanket of safety we sometimes take for granted in this county. And, and, and it's, the safety is just built on the backs of all these men and women that you see each day. We're housing some of the worst criminals across the state in the Edgecombe County jail, and I don't think the citizens understand what we do. We have some of the worst, especially when we dealing with federal inmates that come across the state. So we have housed since I've been at some of the worst that are right here in Tarboro. I, I, sheriff's officer works twenty-four seven, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. Good or bad weather, holidays, no holidays. So please don't continue to allow them to have to seek employment outside of this county. That most of them grew up and they still wanna live. Most people wanna give back to that community that helped raise them. And that's why I continue pushing the way I push because I push for them, for my, my, my employees, my team. So I ask that we honor these men and women by giving them that salary that shows appreciation at an amount that's respectable and competitive. Once again, we'll be entering the city of Rocky Mountain at a request because we're building an elite team. It's not just me, it's the people that's sitting behind me. So moving forward into 2019, please consider us at the Edgecombe Sheriff's Office. Thank you so much. Any questions?
Any questions, sir?
Thank you so much for your time.
And thank you, Sheriff, for coming. And as always, I speak, I'll speak for the board. I think it's the intent of the board to do everything for the sheriff's department and all of our, our other partners that we can. And as revenue, as revenue increase, and we do see some increases. We certainly gonna look at your requests as the, as the manager looks at the total budget.
Yes, sir.
And we really hope that we can honor some of the requests.
Yes, sir.
It is our intent, based on revealed the budget, to honor any request that we can, that we hope that we can.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anything less to that, you know, we, we, we are hard pressed, as you understand.
Yes, sir. I do.
But, but it's our intent to honor any request that we can.
Yes, sir.
Any, any comments from any of the board?
Appreciate what you do. Appreciate what you do.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Thank y'all so much.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. At this time, for the petitions. Is there anybody here that would like to speak?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, all commissioners, citizens. I'm Reverend Rose Bay Hayes from the Big Town of Speed, North Carolina. I'm coming tonight. First, I'd like to ask the community on behalf of Mr. Phelps, and I spoke to him yesterday. He asked that community pray for him. He gets stronger. He still have a ways to go. I miss him. I usually bring a gift, but since I knew he wasn't here tonight, I won't give y'all one, not give him one.
We appreciate that.
Just talking about to the sheriff earlier, I just wanna make reference to one thing that's related to the salary. And I just found this out to be true at certain positions where if you work at the pleasure of people and they can terminate you, I don't care how much the salary you giving them, if, if you living under that threat, I think something need to be done to try to give these worker a little bit more comfort than a salary. Cause again, y'all may not know this, but I know what I'm talking about. Years ago, the Edgecombe County had what you called a, if, if somebody had a complaint, you could file your complaint to the county commissioner. But when you file your complaint to the county commissioner, the county commissioner didn't hear it first. They have what you call a personnel advisory committee. Ms. Frances Harrison, you remember her, Rocky Mountain? She was the chairman, Lynn Hart. And, and you go before that personnel advisory committee, they would listen to your plea and then they would tell the county commissioner. And then some departments, the county commissioner could tell the folk what they did. Then in other position, they could make it as a recommendation. I'm just saying, I think y'all need to put something back together like this, cause you have these people coming out, putting their lives on the line. And then they go to work the next morning and they are terminated and they don't, they're not even told why. It makes no sense. And I'm gonna move beyond that, but again, you can't pay a person, you can pay them a million dollars a day and then they get used to that million dollars and they go to work the next day. You say you don't have a job. That's kinda tough. So, and the, these department heads, they get paid from the same taxpayer money that these employees. It, it, it's, these don't become their personal enterprise just because they're elected to the office. Someone need to be made mindful of that. I'm gonna move on. I'm gonna leave this, I have, I have three minutes, Ms. Harrison, so I mean, I don't have to move on.
All I said was thank you.
Well, yeah, but don't, don't be thanking me. I don't need you to thank you. Just, just respect me. If I, if I yield to the three minutes, then you respect me. I'm gonna leave this with you all. This is a DVD as relate to the town of Princeville. Princeville got hit in, in two thousand sixteen. And I know for a fact, I'm telling y'all, I know it. In nineteen ninety-nine, when, when Hurricane Thor came, I ran up with a gentleman that was working for FEMA. And, and then we went, I met him out there on Howard Avenue, across from what is now that charter school. He was looking at a piece of property that E.C. Power owned right there on your right to consider for a, a site. And so from there, him and I teamed up, we went over to the other street where they end up putting a site in. We went out to Leggitts, to Jerry Dixon location. We went out to Rocky Mountain with the Fountain Correctional Center and we went down to Pine Top. Within a month's time, that, that cottage over there on Industrial Drive, Hospital Drive, they had it converted. I'm saying that to say this, we going into the third year with a disaster in Princeville, North Carolina. And that's, that's only eight minutes there when y'all look at that. But I encourage y'all to ride through there. And it's not like Princeville is not a part of Edgecombe County. They're not done it. It's part of the same hill. And I know those leadership probably done the best that they could to try to make some decision. But everybody should know by now that something is missing. Last week, I got on the telephone, I talked with Senator Fitch, Willingham, and I talked with Butlerfield yesterday morning. If we get ready to celebrate Martin Luther King, if we can't raise up Princeville, we don't have no reason to be singing no "We Shall Overcome" in Edgecombe County. It's a shame and it's a disgrace when you ride over there and see the devastation that left going into the third year. And Commissioner Harrison, I know that you're district, but I don't see that to the district. I see y'all as county commissioner, one should be just concerned about the other, the whole county. And sometimes, to be honest about it, you can get better service from some of the people's eyes of district sometimes and you can't have one that live in anybody's tooth closely to do what they do.
Any questions to come in?
Now you can type them for the parents.
Hearing none, is there anybody else that would like to speak? Please go ahead.
Provo's dance, excuse me. One-two-seven Midway Main, Tarboro. Melanitis peel box one-three-nine-one, Pine Tops. I'm, I'm just floored. I requested this board do not allow anyone to come in and attack the, the commissioner, especially a woman. This, this, this bothers me. No way you should allow a man set up here and disrespect a woman, especially on this board. And you guys ought to say so. I got a problem with that.
Any other comment?
Mr. Chairman, I do repot.
No, sir. No, sir, you cannot.
And don't call my phone no more, you.
No, sir, you cannot. I got it, I got it. Any other question to come in? Anybody for the petition? Hearing none, we move on to other business. Consideration of approval of budget been met, so Mr. Evans, if there's anything there that needs to come to attention of the board?
Yes, sir. Have to answer the questions you might have.
If not, is there a motion to approve?
No.
Questions? All in favor, let it be known by the votes side, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, it is approved. Consideration of revision of planning and inspection fees case, you have it in your agenda package. Is there a motion to approve? Second?
Second.
Questions? All in favor, let it be known by the votes side, aye? All opposed? Hearing none, it is approved. Next, Mr. Evans, see, I'll let you take that.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. The tax you have a policy to establish a syringe exchange program along with the proposed policies and memo from Mr. William Johnson, who's our assistant county manager, which provides information on the need for such programs. Mr. Johnson, if he will make his way up, he's going to present on a few points about this policy. Just to let you know that the Human Services Board does forward their favorable recommendation to adopt the policy. The request action is to approve the policy as presented, as well as the accompanying budget amendment which appropriates funds to implement the program. I'd also like to acknowledge that we have here tonight the chairman of our Human Services Board, Mr. Larry Whitley, as well as our vice chair of, of Dr. Robin Webb Corbett. They're both here as well to, perhaps they might want to make some comments or answer questions.
She got the five-year board, right?
And she, yes, sir. She is also the chair of the Health Advisory.
And they have recommended?
Yes.
Go ahead, Mr. Johnson.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairmen. Good evening, commissioners. Tonight, I come before you seeking support for a syringe exchange program. We're calling this program the Edgecombe Safe Syringe Initiative. In July two thousand sixteen, the North Carolina Legislature passed General Statute ninety dash one-one-three-point-two-seven allowing for the creation of such programs. So a common question is, what is a syringe exchange program? Syringe exchange program provide a place to safely dispose of used syringes and distribute clean syringes free of charge and free from fear of criminal prosecution. These programs also provide access to naloxone, a lifesaving medication that rapidly reverses the effects of, of an opioid overdose. Other counties in our state such as Nash, Cabarrus, Mecklenburg, Hyde, Pitt, and Dare also have similar programs. There are many benefits to such a program, but I'll go over just a few. These include lower numbers of contaminated needles being used in our community, increased access to education and access to drug treatment programs and services, improved safety for law enforcement and other emergency personnel who respond to opioid overdose calls, increased medical care for hard-to-reach populations who often go without seeing a doctor due to the fear of criminal charges or embarrassment, reduced numbers in bloodborne diseases such as HIV and hepatitis C, which are much more common in populations of drug users, which I think is probably the most important reason to have a program like this here in Edgecombe County. So how will our program work? Citizens who sign up for this program will receive an ID card. There are some examples in your agenda of what this ID card will look like. This ID card will allow health department staff as well as law enforcement and other emergency personnel to identify who is a member of the program. And I'm gonna ask Mr. Evans right now, there's an example we put together of this kit and what it would look like and what it contains. I'll have him pass it around. I've gotta tell you what's in it. There are ten syringes or needles. There are some latex contraceptives or condoms. And there is a plethora of information and education materials ranging from HIV, other sexually transmitted diseases, as well as resources to help with drug addiction. So citizens who sign up for this program will receive an ID card allowing Edgecombe County staff and emergency personnel to know who is and who is not a member of the program. If you are, for instance, pulled over on the side of the road and you are a member of our program and you have a dirty needle that contains a trace amount of your drug of choice in it, if you're a member of our program, you will be free from criminal prosecution.
If you've got what, if you've got?
If you're a mem, joined this program and you have a, an ID card stating that you're a member.
If you're pulled over and you've got what in your possession? This package.
Contents of that.
Contents of this package.
Syringe kits will be available to members of the program at both of our health department locations. Trained clinical staff will administer the kits to participants as well as encourage them to get tested for bloodborne diseases and receive medical care at our health department. Staff will also encourage and inform participants of resources available to them that can help with their addiction. Sharps containers will be strategically located in our health departments for proper disposal of used syringes. Staff will also educate participants of the program on proper disposal of syringes when they are unable to get to the health department. The way we had described this in our policy is the participant should remove the needle from the cylinder or the tube, place that needle into the cylinder and replace the plunger behind the needle, encapsulating the needle in, in the tube. We are very confident that the thirty-five hundred dollars we are requesting tonight will fund the program for one year. This funding includes money for the syringe kits that you see in front of you, naloxone medication. And this funding will also go for marketing and advertising materials to, to get the word out on this program to our community. The, the success of this program relies heavily on participation, so it's important to get the word out. Any complaints or concerns or any incidences related to the, to the program will be handled the same way all citizens grievances are handled in the health department by following the Edgecombe County Health Department Complaint Policy. Another benefit to this program is data. The data collected from this program, such as the number of syringes furnished and collected, as well as the number of participants, will be extremely helpful to other opioid efforts in our community such as the core program. These numbers will also help in applying for future grant fundings to combat the opioid crisis present across all communities in eastern North Carolina. With the high rates of HIV and other STDs in our community, along with the ever-increasing rate of opioid drug use, we feel this program is vital to the health of Edgecombe County. I know we've heard a lot of numbers in the past year, but just to give you an idea, in one in thirteen-month period in Edgecombe County, we had a hundred and ninety-five opioid overdose calls, thirteen of them being fatal. A hundred and twenty-eight of those calls were for people over the age of fifty. A hundred and two calls were for Caucasians, eighty-six for African-Americans. And this is in a thirteen-month period. So this, this epidemic hits all ages, all ethnicities. And that's why we feel it's very, very important to Edgecombe County. As Mr. Evans mentioned, this program comes before you with a favorable recommendation from both the Health Advisory Board as well as the Human Services Board. I'm here to answer any questions. As Mr. Evans said, we have the chair and vice chair of the Human Services Board here as well as health department staff to answer any questions you may have. Thank you so much.
Let me ask, Mr. Wood, or Ms. Corrigan, you have anything to, that you'd like to add to the president?
I'm Robin Webb Corbett, and it's a pleasure to be here. Thank you for the opportunity. I had the opportunity to serve as chair of our Health Advisory Board, and thank you for that opportunity. And then I served with Mr. Woodley to serve as vice chair for our Human Services Board. I am a nursing instructor. I teach at East Carolina University and had the pleasure of teaching young daughter, and please give her my regards. And we did very well with her, so I'm very glad you did. But I also have the pleasure, I'm a nurse practitioner, and I work one day a week at Pitt County Health Department. I'd like to tell you that people don't use drugs. I don't think people should use drugs. I don't agree with it. It's not the way, the choice that people should make. I also don't agree with unwed mothers. But I'm not gonna deny an unwed mother prenatal care. I would like to be able to tell you that when I see someone on Mondays, which is the day I do clinical, that when I see them particularly for sexually transmitted diseases, one of the things I ask them about is, do you use drugs? And when they tell me yes, I'm gonna tell them to stop using drugs. But it's not that easy, as you well know. So part of what I'm telling them is, please, if you're going to use drugs, use drugs responsibly. Use the needle exchange program. The issue, as Mr. Johnson has spoken to, is in regards to HIV and hepatitis C in particular, hepatitis B also. HIV, we cannot cure, but we do now. By the grace of God, literally, we have a means that people can be on this treatment, just like diabetes. And as long as they still on the medications, we can control the disease. Hepatitis C, we can now cure, but it is very, very expensive. It is not affordable. And when you talk about people that are overcome by the opioid addiction, we're talking about long-term poor decision-making. If we can help prevent HIV, hepatitis B, and hep C, we've at least made a start. It's not the complete answer. I'll be the first to tell you that, but it's a step in the right direction. So we please ask for your support for this program, knowing that it's not the best decision, but knowing that for us now, this is a wonderful step in the right direction in addressing the drug epidemic that we see in Edgecombe County. It's in Pine Tops, it's in Tarver, it's in Edgecombe County of Rocky Mountain. It's just everywhere. It's your young men and women, as well as individuals in your family, in some way or another. So we appreciate your support, and we'll be glad to answer any questions you may have. Thank you for the time.
Mr. Woodley, here.
Thank you very much, and good evening. I guess you see why she is the vice chair. She does an excellent job, and she knows the health side. I'd just like to say to you, by the way, my name is Larry Woodley. I am the chairman of the Human Services Board. And I'd add my name to the list of people who support this. And coming from a background with law enforcement, one of the first things you think will, don't give them stuff to cause them to do worse. And I think that way, too. But then the benefits outweigh that. So when you look at the end product, we spend pennies buying these syringes and stuff, when you look at the thousands of dollars you save on back end, I think it's nothing but a benefit for the county. And everybody here knows somebody who has been indulged in or been involved, and we doing everything we can to help and assist in any way we possibly can. We also have a HIV STD task force that's in process for almost four years now. We've been pushing hard to come up with anything. We don't turn out anything that has any possibility of helping our citizens with combat drug, the drug epidemic. This is another cog in our wheel that helps us turn, and I don't see how we can say no to something that's gonna do us much good later on down the road. It may not be today or tomorrow, but next week, next year comes, and our kids and grandkids today. We need to have things in place to take care of it, and hopefully by then, drugs will not exist. Of course, that's just a hope, and we know by hope to go. So I'd like to thank you, each and every one of you, for your time, your efforts, and hope you see the light the way we see it and the way the entire health department see it as well. They made the recommendations to us. We took, evaluated, looked at it, and it was a no-brainer to me. It's a no-brainer. So I thank you all, and thank you all for considering the program. Any questions?
Based on the recommendations and the exit recommendations from all of the, if the chair moves to approve? Questions? Go ahead.
Did you ask us for five thousand dollars?
Say five hundred.
Thirty-five hundred is what they're pushing in this board, yes, ma'am.
But we'll take five thousand, Mr. Woodley.
I was wondering why y'all were paying, and why you asking that?
One of the caveats of these programs, when the general statute laid out this law, is that state and federal funding cannot be used for these programs, so it is Edgecombe County tax dollars that will be used for this program.
Any other questions?
One question. Is there a stop sign somewhere for these folks understanding these stuff? I'm just being honest with you. I got, I got an issue with helping somebody stop instead of just putting a stop sign up and say stop. And I know it's hard to stop doing what you've been doing for so long. But somewhere along the way, contributing to the cause of really cleaning, it should be a slap and go fade stop sign somewhere, that they need to stop using drugs.
Yes, sir. And part of the clinical staff's training that they'll get when we, if we implement this program, part of that training will be hard hitting in their face. We will lay out all the dirty facts people don't wanna hear about when they use drugs or other addictive substances. That'll be the main focus of the training for staff, is providing all the resources to them, all the negative things that are going wrong or could in the future happen to them if they continue this type of behavior. That'll be the number-one goal of this program.
I see. I have a question.
Do we have any way to measure success? Say we look down the road and it's two years later. Is there a way?
Some of the first things we have in our policy are just output measurements. How many people come into the program, how many people go out? It will obviously take time to get any real sense of data to see if HIV rates or hepatitis C rates are going down. And even in two or three years down the road, we as a county have, are attacking this problem of bloodborne diseases from so many different angles, it'll be hard to say which program had the biggest effect or the least effect. But as long as at the end of the day, we made a reduction for the pennies, as Mr. Woodley said, we're spending here, I think it's well worth it. But I do think the number of clients or citizens that sign up for the program will be a strong indicator of their success, because we do know that they are using clean needles, because they're bringing us their old ones and they're taking clean ones home.
One other question. Did I understand you right to say if someone was stopped with a trace amount of an illegal substance in the needle, that they would not be charged?
If they're a member of this program.
If they're a member of the program?
Yes, sir.
So if word gets out, join the program, you won't be arrested. What's to dissuade someone from?
It would only, well, it would only be if you're, say you have a dirty needle or a trace, if you have a handful of dope in your car along with the needle, you will get prosecuted. It's only for having dirty needles.
How does, Mr. Peters?
That's how I understand it.
How does this go? I mean?
The statute says residual amounts. I'm not sure how they define residual.
And I think one of the other things, a good question. How do we coordinate this with state law, state law enforcement that might make stops in our county? How do that, how does this program, which say how this program might stop, and then I will have the program? How do we coordinate that with the particular person that's involved in the program?
Yes, sir. I do not, I do not have a direct answer to that question.
Those are unanswered questions that you might need to, we might need an educational process in terms of at least the state agencies, the state officers that serve our county. This program may be coordinated with all of them, everybody, and the local police departments that are working on our county. This needs to be coordinated with them so that they know, make them aware of what we, what we are trying to do.
Yes, sir. I agree.
And I believe that amount's gonna, the residual? Residual amount is gonna be a discretion called out there, too. Okay, so that is something that, after all is said, all in favor, let it be known by the voting sign aye. Aye. All opposed? It appears to be announced.
Thank you, sir.
Go ahead.
One question.
Yes, sir.
Is there anything in your, in this program, when a person is able to overcome their drug problem, they become a mentor to help convince somebody, it's because examples are powerful.
That's not something we had thought of currently, but that is an excellent idea, yes, sir.
It may, it may help somebody quicker than all that you do to get them off the program. That's an issue, and I hate to say it, I don't know why it can't be convincing to somebody. If somebody in front of you dies from using drugs, why do you give them? But some way or somehow, you got to get the message out, and certainly, using somebody who is overcoming, to be a mentor, would be.
Yes, sir.
Excellent idea.
Thank you, everybody, for the presentation. Thank you so much. Moving on, D, consideration of approval of bad debt write-offs for the health department. You've seen it in your package. Is there motion to approve?
So moved.
Questions? All in favor, let it be known by the voting sign aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, it is approved. Want to E, consideration of approval of the acceptable recycling grant for the solid waste department. You've got information in your package. Is there a recommendation to approve?
So moved.
Questions? All in favor, let it be known by the voting sign aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, it is approved. F, I'll let you take that, Mr. Evans.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Wyndell Moore owns property here in Tarver that she is marketing for commercial development. Properties behind the Sure State Plus Hotel running parallel to the bypass, six-four bypass exit lane. Ms. Moore believes that extending Market Center Drive to West St. James Street Extension will make the site more marketable and promote economic development. Ms. Moore is petitioning the North Carolina Department of Transportation to complete the extension of Market Center Drive. She is also requesting the board to approve a letter of support for her efforts. Ms. Moore is here tonight to answer any questions that you may have.
We have not had any questions from Ms. Moore.
I move to approve the letter of support.
Is that second? Is there any way you can show us where, some maps or something?
Yeah.
Do we have them?
And you have one in your packet, by the way, but we'll pull one up on the screen as well.
For some reason, I don't understand these maps too well.
Can I get a question?
Yes, sir. Go right here.
And let me show you.
What is it that's gonna make it more marketable? I guess would be my question. Name?
Please come up and state your name and address, please.
Wyndell Moore.
That's what they have.
Three hundred Main Street, Tarver.
Okay. Go ahead with your question.
So by extending this, what's gonna make it more marketable?
When I've talked with different potential buyers, they look for two means of ingress. This also alleviates some of the congestion in that area. When you try and pull out there, you know, you're taking a risk when you pull out.
Is this already a dedicated road?
You can see there on the display, Bojangles is to the bottom of the screen, and the hotel is above it. Market Center Drive is that red line that runs between those.
Is it a dedicated, is it a president, is it a dedicated?
It's a state-maintained street.
Is it a state-maintained street? Is it dedicated to go all the way through?
I believe there might be a right-of-way already indicated.
The state already owns? Or Tarver owns, or?
I don't, I don't believe so, but I'm interested.
We don't know whose ownership of it.
I've been talking with Deat T about it, and I talked to Ronnie Heeder, and he's gonna look into it for me and see if we can't do it. Let's let Tarver grow, for God's sakes. Let's bring in some new businesses before we lose all the young people. I mean, you know, nobody could advocate better for Tarver than me. I was born, I was raised here, I've come back home soon.
Any other questions, Ms. Moore? We do have a motion, all in favor.
Why not do it?
I'm trying to get it. Hearing, all in favor, let it be known by the voting sign aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, we've, we've got this one, okay?
Thank God. Thank you so much.
We've had people to talk themselves out of it.
I do appreciate it very much. If you have any recommendations on anybody that y'all would like to see in the closed meeting, go out there, please send them to, I will sort the contact.
All right. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Consideration of approval of addition to the nursing home or drug care home advisory, this came before our last meeting. I'll ask you before I get a motion, any questions on this, and suggestions on changes? Is there motion to approve?
First, maybe second.
Questions? All in favor, let it be known by the voting sign aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, it is approved. H, consideration of approval of the retirement of K. Nine C. Swann, and a request for purchase by his family. Is there motion to approve? Questions? All in favor, let it be known by the voting sign aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, it is approved. A, consideration of approval of addition of Thomas Griffin for the water and sewer department. Any questions on what you have read?
I guess the question is, they just need to have the word sewer injected in there.
Yes.
No questions.
Motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Questions? All in favor, let it be known by the voting sign aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, it is approved. Next, consideration of approval, the home located in Midlake Muppets Home Park, that's surplus, and you read the reasons why. Is there motion to approve?
So moved, sir.
Questions? All in favor, let it be known by the voting sign aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, it is approved. K, consideration of approval of grant award from Golden Leaf Foundation for the Advanced Manufacturing Training Center. We have a lengthy discussion on this at our last month's meeting. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Excellent.
Questions? All in favor, let it be known by the voting sign aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Edgecombe County Human Rights Commission, we have a recommendation, and I'm trying to get to it, but how does that?
Recommendation is from Ms. Carol Helen White.
Is there motion to approve? Second. Questions? All in favor, let it be known by the voting sign aye. All opposed? Planning board report?
No, sir. You pretty much touched on everything that came from their last planning board during the public hearings.
After list and releases, is nothing to approve, other than releases for review and approve? Anything of what needs to be considered?
No, sir. Happy to answer any questions.
Motion for approval? Second. Questions? All in favor, let it be known by the voting sign aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, it is approved. Eleven, departmental reports for review. You have read them, I think. Any question on water services, financial services? Hurricane, Hurricane recovery update?
Could I point out something there, Mr. Chairman? It's noted in the report, you may remember, it's been some years back, the county owned four lots on Ridgewood Road. And some years back, we were approached by the Tarver Habitat for Humanity, if we would transfer those lots to them, they were interested in building homes. For whatever reason, they never did. Fast forward to now. We did. The United Methodist Church, who's been here in the county since Hurricane Matthew hit, they came to me saying that they have a group that's coming in April. It's a hundred individuals from Arkansas, I believe. They're looking to build four homes and were interested, wanted to know, you know, where they possibly build it. I suggested they take a look at those four lots. They are interested in those four lots. So unless you have any objection, I don't think it's necessary. At this time, if we transfer it, we bring it back to you. So we have asked Habitat for Humanity, would they transfer those back to the county? And they have agreed to do that, and are processing taking care of that now. So I just wanted you to be aware, at some point, we'll be coming back to you, take some action on this. They'll be building them for flood survivors.
Any questions? Relocation project, comment on it?
No, sir. I have some questions.
Hearing none, manager's report, anything on that you need to go?
I do wanna quickly point out, you may have noticed, I mentioned to you in a text message earlier, that we are changing the flow of the building here just to try to help improve security and client flow in the building. So now client entrance is only in the front of the building. The rear of the building is for employee entrance. You have to enter by a key fob in order to call the elevator. At the back entrance, have to use a key fob. We've given you all one of those fobs to use. One of the things that it will help in particular, not only in the flow and day-to-day operations of the county, but also on a weekend, when the auditorium is being used, we can, we can basically cut that back section of the building off. People can still come and go in the auditorium, use those restrooms outside of auditorium, but not have access into the rest of the building. So we have signs been posted for- So we have signs been posted for almost two months now, just to give the citizens a heads-up on that, and just want you to know that change has already been made. So you do now have access.
If the public use the front to come in, can they exit the back?
They can go out. Yes, sir.
Anything else? Word, man.
You'll see the, the two dates there, on this Thursday, January the 10th, your recreation mini-grants that you awarded a couple meetings back, we'll be making a presentation on that at 10 o'clock in the auditorium, and you're welcome to attend, certainly. And also, I am proposing a date for your annual retreat for March the 18th. That will be, that is the, basically the same time of year in March, same Monday in March that you typically have your, your retreat. So just like to, wanted to present that for your consideration. If so, we'll serve and move forward with that date.
You finished with your report, Sharon?
Yes, sir, just wanted to know if that March 18th date is...
Anybody, March 18th?
It works for me.
March 18th? Oh, that's on a Monday.
Well, it looks like it works for all of us.
Okay. And that's it for my portion.
Commission's report.
Before, Mr. Hensley, I want, as I ask you every month, is there any update of anything pertaining to Princeville that the county is responsible for as far as disaster recovery?
Okay, so we just, we have been waiting on the final signed agreement for the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program for the town of Princeville. They send us around that truck electronically to be signed. I did that on last week, I should have that actual copy in my hand, probably within a couple of days. Soon as I get that, we will start with appraisals for the acquisitions in Princeville. As you know, you had already approved the $2.6 million for the development of the 53-acre tract, or tracks. We are finalizing a request for qualifications. What we'll be doing is to go out to get solicitations from engineering firms, we will select one. The engineering firm will then go out and do an assessment on the 53 acres to determine, you know, soil suitability, you know, layout, build, you know, access, ingress and egress, and make a recommendation as to how much of that 53 acres can be developed. So that's some of the...
In reference to that question, is there anything that Princeville wanted to, to enter or manage? Is there not anything, any comment that you needed to make?
No, Eric and I have sustained communication, so I'm, I'm up to speed.
You up to speed?
Yes, thank you. The other thing I have is, I just passed out 2019, 2020 legislative goals. I serve on Legislative Goals Committee for North Carolina County Commission Association, and on Thursday and Friday, we will be actually having our Legislative Goals Conference. Every county in North Carolina was encouraged to send goals that we will put in our legislative package to the General Assembly. We've gone from 350 goals that were collected down to 35. These right here, I wanted you to look at, because I want you to determine which you think comes in first, second, third place for you, since I'm your voting delegate on Thursday and Friday. I would like to know your opinion, not just my own opinion, of which goals we should present to the General Assembly. So that's why I wanted to make sure that you had copies of it, I didn't know if you have seen it on the website or not. That's why I brought this to you.